This regular meeting of the Nevada City Council to order, it is Wednesday, September 10th, 2025 at 6:30 PM. We are going to begin with the Nisenon tribe recognition. Doug, would you like to read that?
I would love to.
Thanks.
I don't have to stand for that, do I? No, not yet. We acknowledge the Nisenon people are still here among us today, though nearly invisible. We understand that we are on Nisenon land that was never ceded and the original tribal families have yet to recover from the near genocide of their people. As a resident or visitor in Nisenon land, we support the Nevada City Rancheria Nisenon Tribe in efforts to stabilize their people as well as their campaign to restore federal recognition.
Thanks, Doug.
Of course.
Sean, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I would love to.
There you go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now we'll do roll call. Madam Deputy City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cece.
Here.
Mayor Klein.
Here.
All present.
Thanks so much. We'll do the adoption of the agenda now. Council, now is the time for any agenda modifications. Would you like to make any additional changes to the agenda, pull consent items, or do we have any recusals to announce?
Not for me. My move will approve the agenda.
A second.
We have a motion to approve from Councilmember Peterson and a second from Vice Mayor Cece. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Presentations, Sean. How exciting.
I'm excited. Lon is going to join us and introduce two of our new team members that are older team members from somewhere else.
How intriguing.
Older in service, not in age.
Yes, wanted to clarify. Thanks, Sean. So, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, Lon Peterson, Assistant City Manager for the city. I'm excited to highlight and introduce Deanne Kelly and Lindsay Mullins, who've been at the Miners Foundry for many years, keeping that place afloat. They've made significant contributions over the past few months, helping the city. We've set up a transition team for the foundry to work on a very long list of things to transition over to the city, which ultimately we're still working on some of the items, but as you guys are aware, the city transitioned ownership a few months back. With that said, Deanne serves as the finance supervisor for the foundry. One of the things that's been extremely helpful during this transition is all the numbers to figure out how to make things work and bookings and all that. And so Deanne's been incredibly, just extremely valuable. We couldn't have done it without her, so couldn't, I'm very happy about that. In addition, Lindsay is our operations coordinator, and her skills in both coordinating, booking stuff, keeping things moving, there's a lot of moving parts over there. And so in addition to both of them working very tirelessly to help transition, they've also been working with us to keep the foundry moving with all the stuff that's currently happening over there, and then, and also moving things forward with some of the new concessionaire stuff. So with that said, I'll have you guys come on up.
Are you doing this because they're now new city employees?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
That would be good, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so the city transitioned all the staff in that transition. The only employees that weren't transitioned over were bartenders per our current liquor license element, but yeah, all employees were transitioned over a couple months back. And so Deanne is almost full-time with us and Lindsay is full-time. Everybody else is part-time as needed, works at the foundry. So with that, Deanne, would you like to come up and say anything? Sure, please come on up.
I, hello.
Hi.
I would like to thank all of you for hiring us and supporting the foundry during this really hard year, and Lindsay and I are very appreciative to work with Lon and Sean and Donna and Brittany and everyone. So, thank you much.
Thank you, Deanne.
Thank you, Deanna.
Thanks, Deanne. Thank you, Lon. I wrote a little something. Hello, City Council, Mayor Klein, good to see you guys. Most of you know me by now, my name is Lindsay Mullins. I'm the operations manager at the Miners Foundry. I've been there since May of 2024, so I've been there through all of the changes and the transition. I'm very proud to now continue my work with the foundry as a city employee. I'm honored to help preserve the historic legacy of this unique venue while also guiding it into a new era with the city's support. The foundry is more than just a historic building, it's a living cherished center of our community. It has hosted dances, weddings, fairs, celebrations of life, and for many, has been a part of their lives for generations. I'm excited to continue hosting the myriad of events we curate while providing care and consistency to our clients, employees, patrons, and peers. Look forward to building a bright future with all of you. Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
All right, Sean, turn it back over to you.
She said it better than I could have, so.
Yeah. Welcome to all the foundry staff. Awesome. It is my privilege to read this proclamation about Prostate Cancer Month. Whereas prostate cancer is the most frequently diagnosed cancer in men and the second leading cause of cancer deaths in men, and whereas one in eight men have a lifetime probability of developing prostate cancer, one in eight women also have a lifetime probability of developing breast cancer. And whereas this year approximately 313,780 men will be diagnosed with prostate cancer in the United States, and roughly 35,770 will die this year from the disease, which is one man every 15 minutes. And whereas African-American men are at the highest risk for prostate cancer with a rate of one in six men, an incidence almost 70% higher in black men than in white men. And whereas it is estimated 29,600 men in California will be diagnosed with prostate cancer this year, and it is estimated 4,140 California men will die from this disease this year. And whereas education regarding prostate cancer and early detection strategies is critical to saving lives and protecting our families. And whereas the five-year survival rate approaches 100% when prostate cancer is diagnosed and treated early, early-stage prostate cancer usually causes no symptoms. And whereas the American Cancer Society recommends that men have a conversation with their healthcare provider to make an informed decision about testing for prostate cancer. And whereas all men are at risk for prostate cancer, the City of Nevada City joins communities across our nation to increase the awareness of the importance of early detection of prostate cancer. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Nevada City hereby recognizes and proclaims September 2025 as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month.
And Spencer Legate is with us here tonight to accept the proclamation and say a few words.
Guys, thank the City Council for having our proclamation. I'm, I just a word, I'm a 1959 graduate, Nevada Union, go minors, go minors. Come back in the last couple of years. I've been very active for much of my 19-year run of prostate cancer, which I've managed, kept under control. I am very active in two groups, the Greater Sacramento Prostate Cancer Support Group and our local group, the Grass Valley Group, Support Group. And we just had a free screening at the beginning end of the month. Unfortunately, I was not able to present that coming down the road, it just passed. So maybe I'll get in earlier next year, maybe, okay? And what else did I want to say? There's been a number of, just quickly, of improvements since I've had my parents' diagnosis of my cancer. We're using at least sometimes three modalities, three different ways of treat, three different ways of treating cancer. We've recently, in the last five years, developed a process which we call theranostics, which allows us to go in, give a radioligand into the veins, and will identify the cancer, and then later use the same pathways to go after the cancer. It's really, it's really been something in helping us in this. And again, I thank you all of you.
Thank you, Spencer.
Thank you.
All right, now it's time for public comment. Government Code Section 54954.3 provides that any member of the public may address the City Council on any matter not on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. The Brown Act, with limited exceptions, does not allow this council or staff to discuss issues brought forth under public comment. The council cannot take action on non-agenda items. Concerns may be referred to staff or placed on a future agenda. Please note that comments from the public will also be taken on the consent calendar and each agenda item at the time it is heard. That being said, do we have any public comment? Wrong door, Spencer. There you go, over to the left.
Common mistake.
I've done it myself, like, three times.
Put a sign on that door. This is not the exit. Any public comment?
It could be public comment from a deputy city attorney's mother about Nancy, if wanted.
Grandma.
Grandmother.
Grandma, do you have anything to say about Nancy?
Oh, no.
No, sorry. Now's the time.
Moving on. Consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. Before we take action on the consent calendar, we will hear any public comment on the consent calendar items only. Do we have any public comment on a consent item? Hearing none. I'm looking for a motion and a second.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Cece and a second from Councilmember Peterson. Any objections to the motion?
No.
Hearing none, the motion carries. Onto business. Item number five, consideration of one, the introduction of draft ordinance 2025-06, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Nevada City, State of California, amending Section 17.72.026, accessory dwelling units development standards of Chapter 17.72, residential development and conditional use regulations of Title 17, zoning of the City of Nevada City Municipal Code relating to accessory dwelling unit height limitations, and two, calling for a public hearing for first reading of the ordinance September 10th, 2025.
Nice.
Hey, it's Lisa.
Good evening, Council. How is everybody?
Wonderful.
Thankfully for you, I had a practice run of my presentation on Monday, so I'm hoping that it's a little better for tonight. Yep.
Maybe not.
Share screen first. This is the customary pause before any multimedia presentation.
Okay, so my presentation tonight is regarding the height of ADUs, and I'll go over and explain what we have now as our max height that's allowed for ministerial approval, and then also our objective design standards, and then some scenarios to help you understand why this came up and why we are exploring this option. So currently, our code states that max height for ADUs for ministerial approval is 16 feet. That part of our code was adopted in 2020. It was, it came through at the same time as state, as state laws were being passed, which were basically forcing different jurisdictions to ease their regulations with ADUs. Many applications have come through the planning commission that would have otherwise been ministerial. So by that, I mean if a project meets certain standards, I can review them at staff level, and if they don't meet those standards, they can always go to the planning commission for architectural review. And then in an effort to provide flexibility for people that want to build a second unit, we're considering increasing the max height to 20 feet for a standalone unit and 35 feet for an over-the-garage unit, which would never exceed the height of the primary home. I did get a recommendation from the Economic and Community Development Committee on Monday night to continue exploring the 20-foot height option. In your staff report, you'll see that there were scenarios given for both 18-feet height, 19-feet height, and then 20-feet. So, the way that we calculate building height, I've got a picture here I can explain and a little rendering. So, our code reads that the height of buildings are measured from the average level of the stem wall or foundation plus the wall height, plus the height of the gable and wall to the roof peak. So if you see this house on the right-hand side in the picture, that, that building is probably coming in right around 16 feet high, and you'll see that the stem wall on that front bay window is probably about a foot high, and then on the left side, left-hand side of the building, it's probably about nine feet high, was my guess. So, the average of those would be four and a half feet. So if we were measuring this building for the max height that it could be, we would measure four and a half feet plus the wall height plus from where the top of the wall is to the top of the roof peak. So our objective design standards, why do we have them and what do they do? So these also were adopted as state laws were coming down. We were, adopted some laws in 2020 in relation to SB9 and other ADU standards, and then we adopted these in 2022. They basically give us the ability to limit or have some design control over ministerially approved projects. So that could be single fam, development on single-family lots or multifamily. So that's related to roof pitch, building design, siding materials, and window styles. So roof pitch here is a figure that shows what we mean by roof pitch. So it's basically the amount that a roof rises as it's going wide. So it's rise over run, so six and 12 is on the left, and it goes up to 12 and 12. So Nevada City architecture is generally defined by steeper roof pitches, especially motherload architecture, which is referenced in our code a lot and our design guidelines. The image on the left is probably an eight-and-12 roof, a very nice-looking, modern home that's built to be complementary with the Nevada City Downtown Historic District. It's over here on, I think, Factory Street or Spring Street. And then the one on the right bottom is probably a 10-and-12 would be my guess. That's a very traditional motherload style home as well. And then up on the right, this isn't a, and that one is probably historic, built in early 1900s or before. And then the one on the upper right is probably an 11-and-12 or a 12-and-12, and that house is out on Urin Street, and it's a modern home that was built to match the, complement the motherload style. So here's an example of an ADU that I permitted on Nimrod Street. This was a ministerial approval. The contractor wanted to have that sort of approval. He did not want to fuss around with the planning commission. So you can see that his window styles meet our objective standards. The roof pitch is a six-and-12, which meets our standards, and the height of this building is just under 14 feet. You'll also see that this building does not have a stem wall, so it's basically built at grade, which if it had a stem wall, that 14 feet would, would be changing to, you know, probably 16 feet pretty quickly or 17 feet. So a stem wall, for it to be easy enough to build plumbing underneath the smallest is generally three feet. So if this had a three-foot stem wall, all of a sudden, this building would exceed our standards, and it would be at about 17 feet. Here's a project that I brought to the planning commission in August. This is for an ADU that's designed at 174 Grove Street. The picture is of the primary home, and the architect, Dave Mann, came to me and said, these folks want to build an ADU. I'd love to match this historic style of this home and have the ADU be complementary. I let him know about our objective standards and the height limitation. He initially had a drawing that he showed me that was a, I think that main home is like a 12-and-12 or an 11-and-12 roof, and it was a very cute ADU. He decided to meet in the middle and not meet the 16-foot-high standard, but came in with a roof pitch that was a eight-and-12, and the height of the building, you can see on the front, he shows that it's about 18 feet, which is at grade, and then on the rear, it would have come in just at a right, about 20 feet high. When he explained to me the design of this layout, he, he highlighted the importance of having accessibility. This unit's going to be built for somebody who's disabled, and having the ability to have open floor plans is really important for age and place and accessibility, and having two rooms next to each other rather than a long skinny building. So, just a little bit more on stem wall foundations, they require less grading. Small lots may have excess challenges or slopes that make a slab-on-grade foundation less favorable, ease of construction, less experience, expertise involved with building process, and more flexible than a slab-on-grade, and I do believe they're more historically relevant. So here is our current standard with a 16-foot height max roof with a six-and-12 roof. You'll see that a slab-on-grade application, somebody could build a nice wide building, it could be up to 32-foot wide. If they had a three-foot stem wall, which would be a best-case scenario for a stem wall, they would have a max building width of 20 feet, so that doesn't account for any slope of a lot. And then that third image, we're kind of working from left to right, that third image shows if the stem wall height was averaged at four feet, the max width of the building would be 16 feet, and then it quickly goes down. If the average stem wall on a sloped lot was five feet, the max width would be a 12-foot-wide building. And these are to scale, so you can kind of get the sense for, for that skinniness of the building. And then with our current 16-foot height max and an eight-and-12 roof, if somebody wanted to make their building a little bit more charming or for other reasons, slab-on-grade max would be 24-foot wide, three-foot stem wall max 15-foot wide, four-foot average, then you get a 12-foot-wide max building, five-foot average, kind of becomes like a tiny home, nine-foot wide. So there are some pros and cons to the 16-foot height limit. You know, they, they may be suitable for somewhere where people have tight backyards and small lots in subdivisions. The 16-foot height allowance is basically the, it's what we could allow with state law, so it's what we, one of the things that we could impose. So it's basically, we adopted the most restrictive. If, we wouldn't have been able to adopt like a 12-foot, 12-foot-high-max ADU, because then we wouldn't be incentivizing them. So it could be good in somewhere like Folsom or Sacramento where, you know, it's more cookie-cutter lots and people don't want big cookie-cutter lots and people don't want big buildings in the backyard. So the result would be smaller backyard buildings. But they do result in skinnier buildings with less flexibility. So this unit on the right here is one potential solution for working with the 16-foot-high limit, and that's kind of having like a L-shaped building. But they're definitely not getting two rooms next to each other, per se. It's, it's a little bit different sort of interior configuration. And then more challenges with building, and I do believe it's less historically accurate to have these short, shorter buildings. So with the potential 20-foot-high-max roof pit, with a six-and-12 roof pitch, here's some scenarios that kind of can demonstrate the potential change if we decide to move forward with this. So slab-on-grade, same thing, very wide, three-foot wide, three-foot stem wall would allow for a 20-foot-wide building. I think I might have a typo here.
We got the ADU?
Yeah.
Yep. Done. Well, in your staff report, you'll see, if you want to turn to that page on the PDF, I'd be happy to go over it with you. It's basically, you can see the difference. Sean, if you could back me up and say what the width would be for each, that would be great.
Yeah, you want the 20-foot height?
Yeah, so the three-foot stem wall.
So it's slab-on-grade 48-foot with a, that's an eight-foot interior wall, 36-foot, if it is the three-foot stem wall. 32 feet is the next one, and 28 feet is the last one. For a nine-foot interior wall, which is probably a little bit more common, 32 feet at the six-and-12, three-foot stem wall, 28 with the next one, and 24-foot wide is the worst-case scenario for the five-foot stem wall. That's page 32 on the packet on that guy.
Thank you.
32?
32.
Thank you.
Oh my God. Why does this?
That's got all of the various ones, but broken down by eight and nine-foot wall heights, interior wall heights.
You raise the height, it gets bigger.
It can get bigger.
Not always.
Yeah. So I will say that I don't think I've ever received an application for an ADU without somebody coming and talking to me first. And so if we did make this change, it wouldn't just be like, "Oh yeah, go as big as you want." You know, we would still sort of guide people in the direction of, "What, what are you, what's your house like? What's your lot like?" And, and help them choose the best route. Okay, I'm just getting here. So yeah, with the six-and-12, this keeps glitching out.
Yeah, mine too.
Mine too.
I'm so sorry.
It's on file two.
Is it on file?
Yeah. She's asking for approval to go to 20 feet.
So right now?
Yeah, well, to go there, there, better come back here for 20 feet. Yeah. Oh yeah, okay.
Yeah, so this hasn't been through our, you know, routine processes, going through a committee. It's starting at the council, then being referred to a committee to do some work, to come back to the council, then to move forward. So it just went to committee on Monday. Lisa will explain some other reasons, our grant and other things that are, you know, wanting us to push this a little bit forward. But it's, it'll go to the Planning Commission with your approval on the 18th this month and come back to you for first reading on the 24th. And then second reading will be on October 22nd, because we're dark on October 8th. So there'll be, besides Monday and tonight, there'll be three more opportunities for the public to hear this and, you know, put in public comment.
So you want to, what is the change you're asking?
So the change would be to allow for a taller height allowance for ADUs for a ministerially-approved project.
And the height that we're?
So the height that we're at now is 16. And the height that we are considering is 20 feet. So it's four feet higher overall.
And it stays at six-and-12?
So six-and-12 is the minimum that's allowed with our objective design standards. So if someone wants to do an ADU?
Even if it is architecturally at odds with the original building on the site?
Correct.
Yes.
So we're, so the, the problem today is that if someone wants to, they can push it into being compliant with the architectural or with the objective design standards, and then we're obligated to approve something that is inconsistent with the buildings next to. This is, will allow us to, instead of, when someone says, "I want to build it," compliance that, or more appropriate, then it could be approved ministerially instead of having to go to the Planning Commission or?
And this is its course correcting after statement.
Exactly.
I do understand that, I do understand that, but I was curious about the roof pitch. But this doesn't change, this doesn't allow for an alternative roof pitch.
Correct. But that could still go to the Planning Commission, and the, and the Planning Commission has approved some shallower roof pitches.
I mean, yeah, I get, I mean, because that's, okay.
So the, the examples that I showed with six-and-12 and eight-and-12, if somebody had a historic home, they might actually want to do a 10-and-12 or a 12-and-12.
Yeah, no, that's really crazy.
Yeah, so, so it provides flexibility to be complementary. And then just to kind of go over this, if there was an average stem wall height of four feet with an eight-and-12 roof, the max building width would be a 24-foot-wide building, which is very livable, comfortable, workable. And then same thing, four feet with a six-and-12 would be a max 28-foot-wide building. That's not a, that's not a big, you know, that's not something that a 2,000-square-foot home would come in at. They would come in much bigger than that. And so yeah, the, also considerations for allowing taller wall height. So if somebody wanted a nine-foot wall for a more roomy interior, paired with an eight-and-12 roof or a 10-and-12, if somebody had a, wanted to get that historical aesthetic, then, you know, the building just changes under the allowance, unless they could keep it under that 20 feet.
Six-and-12's the minimum. They can go, they can have a higher pitched roof, they can have a less pitched roof on the primary pitch of the roof. Secondary pitch, like a porch or something, could be four, not less than four-and-12.
So you could go 10-and-12, and it's still doing it administratively?
Yeah.
Yes.
It would constrain the?
It constrains the, today, that would be a nine-foot-wide building.
Yeah.
It'd be an outhouse.
An outhouse, yeah, I was just going to say that.
So sorry about that. So yeah, with the pros and cons, with 20-foot-height-max, more options and flexibilities, which is what we're talking about, for those that want to design with the historical aesthetic, more flexibility for nice features like taller wall heights, more neighbor, potentially more neighborhood cohesion by having more steep roof pitches rather than people trying to meet the standard and keeping it at six-and-12. More applications will be eligible for ministerial approval, which results in lower fees and a streamlined process. And then the overall four-foot height difference of a 20-foot height-max versus a 16-foot, if paired with a wide building, could be considered imposing in mass and scale to some, especially if built in a, on a small lot. So that would be a con. This building on the right-hand side is actually a really good example. This is, I think, coming in just, just at about like 20 or 21 feet high. And you'll see that it looks like a very livable ADU with a nice, I think that's like a 10-and-12 roof.
Is that in Nevada City?
No, but hopefully it will be. This is, this is a rendering that Chuck Dorette did for hit, for our ADU master plans. So our next steps, I went to the committee. I do believe it's sort of going through the right process. It hasn't been identified in the strategic plan. I think it would be complementary with our housing element goals, though. So we took it to the committee. I do have it on the agenda for next week's Planning Commission meeting to review the ordinance language and all of the materials. And then if they see the proposal favorably without revision, then it would be coming to the council at the end of the month for first reading. And then to the later October meeting. If the Planning Commission sees issue with it, we'll talk it all out, have them do what they do with, you know, considering all the scenarios. And if it needs to come back to another meeting with them, I'd be happy to do that.
Do we take a vote on setting the public hearing?
We'll wonder what happens if we do.
Yeah. Well, we had little community engagement around it, just for clarity around that.
I can imagine.
And I think, you know, Adam and I, 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 you guys have heard me say this, that, you know, housing is a multifaceted issue, and we're just taking off little, little chunks and little bites to sort of look at a really, really big problem. And for me, you know, this is part course correction after a state mandate that doesn't really fit our community, and it's also just like allowing some things to be ministerial for ease, for ease of homeowner, in, and cost being part of that ease, for sure. Cost, process, time, and so any little bit that we can do to make things easier, to create more housing and living situations in our community, I think is fantastic.
Exact, exact same words. Just acknowledging that we're not flatlanders here, that if you're building here, you're quite likely building on a slope.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah. I've seen your houses.
My backyard, same situation. Knowing that folks like Dave Mann, the architects who are trying to build something cool in this town and make it easier on them in terms of time and money, bringing it to the Planning Commission versus having Lisa say, "Looks great." Yeah.
Yeah, if you did the math for the houses that are on Sacramento Street that back up to Deer Creek that have 30-foot stem walls, that makes, you know, a single-story 16-foot house, you know, 55 feet.
Yeah. Yeah. I think in the PowerPoint, that example on Nimrod Street is a really good example of the result of the limitation. And when the 16-foot-high was adopted, we didn't have the objective standards done yet. So there was kind of like, they might not, like city staff might not have been thinking of that at that time. They were just, you know, reacting to what was coming down and, and trying to, you know, adopt it as required.
Well, echoing Adam's statement, building a slab at grade is both unlikely in this town and not very, not a good idea. Many of our homes are below street grade and would flood easily in rain if they were not elevated by a stem wall of some sort. So despite my general opposition to increasing density in town, I think this is a good adaptation to the facts of life here in Nevada City.
Here, here. I, I agree. I think, you know, I, I think this is obviously a no-brainer. The only thing I would say is, is, you know, one of the concerns would be, you know, the, going up higher, you're looking into different people's windows, right? And so, you know, there, there might be?
You are.
What? But, no, there's a privacy issue, right? You know, when you're going a little higher and, and stuff like that. We have, you know, it doesn't fit into too many neighborhoods, but, you know, that, couple things. So the, I, I just would want you to be able to have conversations with people as they came to you, say, because like what you're saying is, I'm going to sit down with them, look at their, where their spot is, look at the neighborhood, saying, "Hey, well, you have a neighbor here, maybe you don't want to go up," so you're looking directly in their window. I mean, is that part of the process that you do now, right? Sort of guiding them to be, you know, have a, a good project. You know, I saw that place on Nimrod, I watched it get built, and I was like, "What's going on there?" You know, it's a weird little, it looks like a trailer. It looks like a trail, you know? And so I was like, "How do we allow that kind of thing?" Now I completely understand. But I, I just would wish that, you know, there would be some way to, you know, I mean, we can't, you know, if we're going to say 20 feet, we're going to say 20 feet, but, you know, if you're 20 feet and you're peering down somebody's window, that, you know, that would be a concern for me, but, you know, I'm not going to, you know, it's not going to be the, it's not going to be common. It, it's going to be the exception, not the rule.
And that's why we added the not to exceed the height of the primary structure, so you wouldn't be any taller than what is, could already see.
Exactly, yeah.
And the objective design standards, correct me if I'm wrong, Lisa, for ADUs, except for a small subset of them, wouldn't allow the windows to, you'd have windows that would face that, so they could see that house. You'd have to put the windows on other surfaces.
Oh, really?
So they wouldn't intrude into those.
Yeah, so if people are using the reduced setbacks, which are allowed by ADUs, they wouldn't be able to have doors and windows on that side of the building.
Nice.
Unless it was required for health and safety or fire, fire exit.
Guys are catching.
How was the laugh?
You know, I think it's great. I'd love to see, like, in a year, a report on like how many people we shifted to ministerial and, you know, what, and, and just also the sort of volume of ADUs. You know, I think we, we need more ADUs, obviously.
Right.
You know, I, I think that anything to incentivize, you know, we just, you know, the whole ADU concept never really worked for California. People just built them and used them for themselves, and so it really hasn't impacted our housing. Here, maybe it will, especially as we adjust our short-term rental standards and everything like that. So, yeah, anything to make it easier, I think it's great. So thank you for a great presentation.
Yeah, thank you.
And, and nice improvements from Monday on the presentation.
Yeah, you didn't make her choke tonight.
I didn't choke on the presentation.
What happened, what happened on Monday?
I, her, her presentation was so moving, she took my breath away.
Well, we'll just leave it at that.
Do we have any public comment on this before we proceed? Okay.
So what do we decide, to send it to the Planning Commission?
Providing us direction to move it forward.
Why are we coming here first before going straight to the Planning Commission and then coming back to us twice? I mean, for the first and second reading.
Because it hasn't come to you as a direction of policy yet.
Oh, I see.
So there's, this hasn't been anywhere where you, where you said, "Yes, this is something that we want to implement."
We'll be coming out of left field.
Yeah. I get it.
Without any notice of the public.
Yeah, I know.
It's on the agenda already, right? Do you need a motion?
Ready to go. All right, moving along.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Business item number six, consideration of, one, approval of a memorandum of understanding between the City of Nevada City and Pioneer Community Energy for participation in low-carbon-fuel standard program services between Fuse Carbon Technologies and Pioneer Community Energy, and, two, authorizing the city manager to execute any contracts or related documents.
Hi, Brittany.
Hello, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I'm here tonight to share with you some details about this program, like he mentioned, with Fuse and Pioneer Energy. This is a program that the city would like to enter into. The program is where we trade energy credits for cash. And so based on what our EV chargers generate out there on a quarterly basis, that can get traded for dollars, right? And so we want to work with Fuse and Pioneer Energy on, on that transaction. We have the six commercial, or the six EV chargers in commercial lot, though if we chose to install any more in various locations, those would be part of the program as well. Once the transaction is made and those, those are sold, then Fuse and Pioneer each keeps 5% of their revenue, and then the rest of it comes back to us. I'm sure Councilmember Peterson is firmly, firmly aware with the details, because he is part of the board there. So the city would anticipate that this program would increase our general fund about 3,000 to 5,000 each year. That, you know, is a wide range, because usage can vary from period to period. So what we're, what we're here tonight is to ask you if you would request, and I would like to request for you to approve the memorandum of understanding with Fuse and Pioneer Energy.
Excellent.
If I might?
Please.
So the best way to understand this, and it's, it's really interesting, I mean, entrepreneurs in the world, but they're aggregators. They, they work in a broad swath, like all of, so we're going to get 3,000 to 5,000 a year, okay? That's something we didn't have before. But then they're doing it in Nevada County, and then they do it in Placer County, El Dorado County, and especially if you've got a bigger fleet of electric vehicles, but they're aggregating for the entire area, so there, there is money being made both by Pioneer and by Fuse, because it's volume. We benefit because, you know, 3,000 to 5,000 would pay for another charger. So it's, it's small, but it's, it's a smart thing, and we get credit for it also, right? In, in terms of carbon neutrality, is that part of it? Yeah, so we get credits for that as well.
It's, it's essentially done on the cap-and-trade model, but it is not cap-and-trade.
Exactly, exactly.
Don't say those words.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, I think it's a smart thing, so.
Thanks, Gary.
Any public comment on this? Any comment from my colleagues? Question stuff?
Yeah. Where is Fuse?
Where is Fuse located corporally?
I don't know where that's at. Sean, do you know where that's at?
Yeah, they're a division of another company that is LA-based. But the, what we're entering into is an MOU with Pioneer, who has entered into a master agreement with Fuse, so that anybody that's a JPA member of Pioneer can enter into this agreement. So we're not, we don't have a direct relationship with Fuse. We do, we retain our relationship with Pioneer Community Energy, which we have board representation on.
Again, Pioneer looking for ways to benefit its customers.
Cool. Is there any way we could make more money by not entering this agreement?
We could if we did it ourselves, but the, when we looked at, you know, what it would cost to be involved in that, and it's about right around $100,000 a year to be involved in that kind of credit trading process, just to start up and do any credit trading, right? So it would not be beneficial to us, as opposed to they're gonna do, you have $100,000 expense, but they do it over a broad area, so they get a whole bunch of little pieces of other people's money.
Plus, if we did it ourselves, we'd probably have to staff it ourselves.
Yes, we'd have to have somebody that was in that market.
With six chargers, nobody's gonna return our phone.
Well, what we could do is use the money to buy more chargers and just trade up like Monopoly.
Yeah, exactly.
We just have chargers everywhere. Okay, are we, may I?
Sometimes we have the rollbacks.
I just want to ask a question about electrification. Are we planning, do we have an electrification plan for our fleet?
We do, but our fleet is so small that it really, it doesn't, currently doesn't apply to our Public Works vehicles because they exceed the GVW. It doesn't apply to our fire vehicles because their grass valleys, even the ones we own, are bigger, that their fire vehicles, doesn't apply to our police fleet. So it really only applies to the couple of vehicles that are used administratively and two pickup trucks out at the water treatment facility. But as we replace those, they'll be replaced with electric. And as we have opportunities, we're using hybrid, like the latest police vehicle bought for the police lieutenant is a hybrid gas-electric.
Can we use our, can we get any credit for our e-bikes?
We can't currently for our e-bikes, but we could get credit if we put a charger for our own plug-in chargeables at the Public Works yard, then we would get credit for that. If we, when we make the house in Pioneer Park available for workforce housing, if we put an EV charger there, that's a city-owned asset, that actual kilowatt-hour usage could also be included.
That's awesome. We could make $3,750.
Huge amount. I want to get up to that $150,000 threshold, right?
Not gonna happen, Doug, sorry.
Well, I just think that it's great that we're moving towards electrification. I think this is a great idea. I concur with Gary that it's a no-brainer that we do this. It doesn't, there's no on-ramp for us. It doesn't cost us $100,000 to ramp up. And, you know, I think it's a part of the good process of being good partners with Pioneer Energy.
And they're, to answer your question, Vice Mayor, they are on K Street in Sacramento is their U.S. headquarters, or Cockletham, British Columbia, if you want their Canadian headquarters.
So they're Canadian.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Brittany. Will you come back and let us know what the exact number was after a year?
Don't we have to vote to approve the MOU?
Yes, we do.
Only if you want the money.
That was just my last comment.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Will we take a roll call then?
You might want to check the poll.
Oh, does the public have any comment on this?
You did ask.
You did that part. I don't think you need a motion and a second, do we?
We haven't had that yet, no. Can I get a motion?
I move that we approve the memorandum of understanding between the City of Nevada City and Pioneer Energy for participation in low-carbon fuel standard program services between Fuse Carbon Technologies and Pioneer Community Energy and authorize the city manager to execute any contracts related documents.
And I'll second that.
We have a motion from Councilmember Fleming and a second from Councilmember Peterson.
You gotta make it colorful, right?
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cece.
Yes.
Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brittany.
Thanks, Brittany.
You get better at this all the time.
Thank you.
Reports and future agenda items, Sean.
I have, I think, four things for you. First, there's a pumpkin sitting where sometimes the chief sits, and there's...
That's not the chief.
There's five other pumpkins over here. Those are for the council members to paint. So we would invite you to paint them at Seaman's Lodge and/or the Rec Hub either this Saturday from 2:30 to 5:00 p.m. or next Thursday from 5:30 to 8:00. This is for the Public Arts Commission is partnering with Nevada City Rotary for pumpkins for Polio and Projects. They'll ultimately be auctioned off on October 15th, and we'll see which council member's painted pumpkin gets the most amount of money, so...
Between $3,000 and $5,000 usually?
$3,000 to $5,000.
Are we supposed to paint it in our lakes?
Do we like carve them or just paint them?
Paint them, paint them. So they actually, the ones that were from last year that, you know, were in business windows downtown are still there. They seal them, they don't rot.
They don't rot?
Yeah, so they do pretty good. So you don't have to come to one of the events to paint them. We can get you the paint separately, but we'd invite you to. Tomorrow is September 11th. While it's designated Patriot Day, which is a national day of service and remembrance, it's not a federal holiday, so please put your silver coins in the meters outside so you don't get a ticket, because Tim is very, very good. He'll try to find you so that you don't have to get a ticket, just reminding folks. This Friday, our Public Arts Commission, which Brittany is our staff liaison to that, by the way, will be heading up to Truckee for a joint meeting of the Public Arts Commission of Truckee with our Public Arts Commission in conjunction with the Truckee Nevada City Dark Sky Photography Award Ceremony, which the mayor will be presenting some of the big-ticket awards. Thank you, Mayor. And the last thing is, the new Champ Gallery installation is in place here at City Hall.
Looks lovely.
The opening event will be 5:30 at our next, just before our next council meeting on September 24th. But for folks that haven't seen that, Brittany also involved with that. Lisa was the one that started all of that and got everything going out there with the help of the commission, so a lot of staff hands on those things out there. We don't just have things hanging anymore. Now we have some stands and some little, I don't know what you would call it, little glass cubes on shelves that are protecting some very small items. So it's wonderful as that thing grows. So if anybody's downtown, walk through. And that's all I have this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Sean. Doug?
Yes.
Do you have anything you'd like to share?
I feel better, but I don't feel great.
Okay.
So I wasn't here last time. I missed a good, a couple of good meetings. I watched you guys on the TV, though, and I was...
Oh, it's a good show.
It was fun. I really enjoyed watching, and I was like, "Wow, we're boring."
Perfect. Gary?
Yes, so it's interesting, met yesterday with these emergent Firewise Community Organization, and do you know the exact title?
They're a coalition.
Yeah.
The coalition, but really impressive, really, there was a great letter in the editor to the editor today from somebody from Penn Valley praising them, and I would just underscore that 100%. We are starting to work with them closely. I met with them as we are starting to develop the Pioneer Park Firewise Community, starting to stand that up, and they just have a lot of great advice. They have how-to books, they have, you know, they're just really useful and really helpful and really connecting, and they're just really great people, so...
It's great to hear.
It's really good.
We need them.
We do need them. So it's very positive, and I was very impressed with Joanne Fitz, who knew exactly which Hot Shot Crew I was on when I was younger. So that was very positive. Looks like the tank project in the park is nearing completion. It's been a lot of hard work over there that I got to watch, observe coming out of the ground, and it's always, you know, great work by our parks and rec people. So a lot of good work happening in the city.
320,000 gallons a month of treated water is what that's gonna save.
Nice. That's excellent.
Yeah.
How do we quantify that in dollars?
Not really dollars, because we don't pay ourselves back for that, but it increases our ability to not take as much water from NID and...
That translates...
Which translates to savings for...
It also provides consistency in irrigation in the park and water needs in the park, which just basically would get turned off at a certain point, so...
Nice.
Yes. So, great, thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Daniella, anything?
Come back to me, please.
Running out of people. Hey, Lou.
Hi. A couple of things. The mayor, myself, and Councilmember Fernandez all attended the community forum on Proposition 36 and ICE and learned some kind of scary things about ICE. One is that they don't notify the local authorities when they're going to show up, and that even if they did, there's nothing local authorities can do. And I heard you, Adam, after the meeting, ask a very important question. So if we don't know when ICE is operating locally, and the public doesn't know that it's ICE that's operating, how is a citizen to know the difference between an ICE apprehension and a kidnapping? And they did not have an answer to that question. On a more positive note, I've been working with the Nevada City Rancheria Nisenon Tribe on celebrations for Indigenous Heritage Day next month. We may or may not have something to present to the council at our next meeting. Some personal notes, I would like to say hi to my father, Louis J. Cece, who on this day was born 98 years ago. So he's 98 years old today.
Wow.
I would like to acknowledge the passing of Dennis Casellas, a longtime resident of the county and servant of the county, especially in his service to the Nevada Cemetery District. He passed away last week. And finally, I am appalled by the murder of Charlie Kirk today. We must not become a country that conducts its political discourse from the muzzle of a gun. It is up to us to preserve public debate and public discussion as the path to policy through compromise, understanding, and mutual respect. I hope that we all can work toward that.
Gary, yeah. Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Daniella.
Yeah, so Adam and I had our economic and community development meeting on Monday. We are working on a couple of things that will come to you guys later. We are gonna do one more round of adjustments on cannabis ordinance and expect to see that somewhere around the end of the year, I imagine. And then also got a first look at our first communications plan. Hopefully, we'll be able to work with staff and do some work on that and get that to you guys sometime in the future also. And realizing that it's helpful when we share, like, in-depth what happens in committees and sort of the process, so that, yeah, that's helpful. I met with the Jedi Group some time ago. Nothing of note to report there. It's a tedious, slow-moving group, if I'm being honest. Not because of Nevada City's participation, that's for sure. And also just want to note, I've been walking the tribute trail more recently and just, gosh, what an asset that is to our community at just being such close proximity and getting such, feeling like you're away from people in town. And it's really used. A lot of people use it. I always run into interesting new people on the trail, and, yeah, just really, really, really feeling grateful for that recently. And then also, Nisenon Heritage Day will be back this year. We'll have more information for you guys. I don't, I couldn't find the exact date. I think it's October 11th or 12th, but we'll come back next. Next meeting, give you more explicit details. It coincides with the opening of the new exhibit at the gallery, Ubisao, on their ancestor of Pamblum. That's all I got.
Thanks, Daniella. I just wanted to quickly praise Unit J on the successful event they had Friday night. Doug was there. I have never seen Seven Hills like that before, just hundreds of people, hugely successful event, tons of fun. I think everyone had a great time.
It was amazing.
All it takes, you just have to get like a straight-up hip-hop legend to come to our little town, and then people show up and celebrate.
People were blown away.
Sure. So, yeah, just, that was really exciting. It looked like, from my perspective, it looked like a ton of work for their very small team.
It did.
So as successful as it was, I don't know if they're in any kind of hurry to try anything like on that level again, but it was pretty spectacular to see that many people in that area, because usually it's just not like that. And we've been talking a long time about bringing life to that area, and that was...
That's what everybody said, too. A lot of the people are from locals, and they just loved it, too.
Yeah.
You know?
It was a really great way to make use of that space, so congratulations to them, and it was a very, very fun event. I apologize for this extremely long meeting. I'm looking for a motion and a second to adjourn.
Can I just make one point about that?
You may.
Just really quick.
You know what, you may.
Just to, so I was walking in, and a friend of mine, who's a very, very successful muralist, was walking by, and he says, "What's going on here?" I told him his favorite band, he walks in.